The time is now 5:00 p.m. I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. If you haven't done so, please sign in in the back. And at this time, silence your cell phones. So this evening, we will begin with a public hearing for declaring certain properties a public nuisance. So what I will do is I will call this public hearing open. And I will go down the list of each address. And if there is anyone here for or against any one of these addresses, if you will come up and speak into the mic at that time. So is there anyone here for or against 430 Magnolia Street being declared a public nuisance? 566 Newton Avenue? 616 Magnolia Street? 198 Magnolia Street? 615 North Merrick Avenue? 545 Ufala Street? 551 Newton Avenue? That being the end of the list, I call this public hearing to a close. At this time, we will go down the agenda for this evening's 5:30 p.m. meeting. So after a call to order and prayer and pledge allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on July 15, 2025. Council members, do you have any questions about those minutes? Item number four is to set the agenda for the evening. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. And those addresses were the ones that we just had the public meeting for. 430 Magnolia Street, 566 Newton Avenue, 616 Magnolia, 198 Magnolia, 615 North Merrick Avenue, 545 Ufala Street, 551 Newton Avenue. Right here, would you like to speak on any of those? Council members, do you have any questions on any of those? Item number six is a resolution appointing August 26, 2025, or appointing the election officials.
Yep, so it's getting closer to election time, and this is the last opportunity that we would have in order to appoint poll workers for the upcoming election. And so that has been provided in the form of a resolution.
Council members, do you have any questions about that resolution? Item number seven is to award the street paving project to Water and Dress Construction Company and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement of such award in the amount of 618-115.35. Ryan, would you like to come up and speak on that?
Very happy with the oath bid, really. I anticipated campground costing that much by itself, so that's to cover campground and the milling and resurfacing of East College Street.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Ryan regarding that?
So those are the only two roads that you're going to do is campground from city limit to city limit.
That's over five miles, yes. It's more than large than a wild.
The one from the civic center is that we had utilities.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Randy does a great job. I really want to say that. But as I have been going about the city, I have a citizen to raise a question about our streets in the form of can we publicize which streets are being repaid?
Yes, and we will. We will. And the reason, I mean, I could do that, for instance, I've got tonight a copy of the ones I proposed for the redil project for the upcoming next year. But, you know, as far as advertising the roads themselves, I mean, I don't know if we, you know, when we get these bids back, if that's even going to be possible. So that's kind of a dilemma. But I do advertise once we do.
You have to do.
Yes, after we've just been ordered, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Jackson, I got a question about that. Do you mean advertising that, hey, this one's going to be paved, or, hey, this one's going to be closed for paving?
Well, they just want to know it prior to paving. Like I said, it can be after the speed, you know, prior to paving. If we can just let the citizens know these, you know, number streets are being paved by name.
Under any other comments on awarding that paving project? Item number eight is to approve the growing Alabama funding agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce in the amount of $150,000. Hi, Holly, would you like to speak on that?
Sure. So this is similar to the project we did a couple of years ago. It was our corporate park. And we applied for funding through tax credit dollars for the growing Alabama program. I applied on behalf of the city for a airport parcel. So this will be to clear it and prepare it and bring an entrance into it, basically prepare it so that we can have a viable business there. Our next step would probably be just to take, I mean, build another round of this funding. We can take it a step further, but this would be a great start, just having a shovel ready. And Sonoma's bank has committed $150,000 of their tax credits toward this. And so we just have to authorize the mayor to execute the funding agreement so that we can get the funding and start work.
Okay, awesome. Council members, do you have any additional questions for Holly on this?
This will be a better for.
Yes, it'll be basically making room for another aviation-related industry.
And if y'all want, let Holly explain, we also applied one from ODEC. And ODEC will be spending the money there and doing it, but just.
Yeah, so we did two applications in the same round of funding. One was on behalf of the city and one was for ODEC. The parcel that ODEC purchased from the school system a couple of years ago, that's the last remaining parcel in the industrial park. So same idea there, we'll just be clearing the land for that.
Both of these projects, it's hard to sell them in the condition they're in there. You just can't tell much about them. So we get them cleared, cleaned up.
Yeah, and the one at the industrial park, we've actually had some interest in, but you can really see it and have some work done. And just, and two, you know, if a company came along and they wanted to send us, we can say, well, we've already done this. We've already gotten it this far and put this much into it. So that's always helpful.
Would this cover, would this cover any pavement as well and getting the shovel really, or around?
It'll be probably some paving to make an entrance into it, yeah.
Any additional questions for Holly on this? Thank you, Senator. Item number nine is to approve the mayor to execute an updated use agreement for the Batty Caged Eagle Stadium with Ozark City Schools. So Ozzy, would you like to come up and speak on that?
Hi, Blake. So I sat with Coach Logan a couple weeks ago, and thanks to Brandon's mediation in the meeting, we have been able to achieve an agreement where to use our facilities, and we both benefited from it, so in good shape.
Council members, do you have any questions for Ozzy on this joint use agreement?
You got it all worked out.
Yes, sir.
Well, this is just the Batty Cages, what about the concessions? So it's actually in the agreement. It actually is for, it says Batty Cage, but the joint use agreement is actually for Eagle Stadium, the sessions, and the Batty Cage. Should we state it that way or delete it?
I think it is stated in the contract, in the budget contract.
Yep.
So however you would like to, Eagle Stadium and Batty Cages or something like that.
It's a way of saying for both parallel baseball in the city. I saw that white room over there for the.
And getting the floor of betting is there when you, so everybody's happy.
Any additional questions for Ozzy on this agreement?
I'm going to get it worked out.
Everybody's happy.
Thank you, Ozzy.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is a resolution adopting a transportation plan for fiscal year 2026. Ryan, would you like to come and speak on that?
Yes, and this is part of what Chris shared earlier in the budget meeting. This is an obligation we have to share and actually publicly vote on for the Fund 23 is what we call it. But it's the excess tax that Governor Ivey implemented back in, it's a couple of years ago. I don't know the exact date, but that's that $130,000. That money will actually be applied and used, for instance, the community development block grant, that would be one item that we could possibly use that money for, and any excess that maybe we were running to for our '26 paving plan.
So it's funds to be, extra funds to be applied to our paving plan?
Yes.
What's that like, half a street compared with the cost of?
$130,000, so, you know, and, you know, for instance, driving or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Any little, there a little bit else?
And it was accounted for in the next budget?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
President, Ram, realizing we've been using this CDVG money for street resurfacing, could this also, what we're talking about now, be used for sidewalks?
Yes, I believe it could, but there is a program, TAP program, that we could access that we can utilize for that. And I am working on some of that. The transportation alternative program is the one that's typically given for sidewalks, gives you the flexibility to put them anywhere and make them ADA compliant, which we utilize, we did, I think the last one we did is by the Boys and Girls Club. It was from two years ago, so. And it's usually a two-year cycle in between, so, and typically the community development block grant is there at your eligible every year, but you typically, we've never been selected every year. It's usually you kind of skip every year to kind of get the money to flow through the state, so. But we will be applying for that this year.
You know, we're in dire need of more sidewalks.
Or at least, we need a lot of sidewalks, many, you know, ADA compliant standards, but so even that too.
That really lets go over there, too, by the Boys and Girls Club.
It does.
But we have so many people riding these motorized wheelchairs and bicycles where there are not any sidewalks, particularly on Royal Parker Road, from Meeks' School Road to the Oak Tree Manor. We just have a long oak.
And that would be, you know, that's one of the roads I've looked at. That would be a really difficult road to go.
South Union.
The shoulders of that road would make it very difficult, but.
South Union from town, there's no sidewalk north south.
Yes.
Well, from Ozark Baptist, I guess, and that is, we really don't have any sidewalks.
But the community development block grant, the other two big uses are, you know, we've used it for house remodels for areas that have low income and are in need of that, you know, that's been used, we've done it. We haven't done it since Jonathan has been here. The other big use is demolition. I truly would have.
And I don't want to excite anyone, but when we're talking about the land being cleared off 231, there are no sidewalks from the Boys and Girls Club toward 27. There are none, like I mentioned, on Royal Parker Road from North Union, this side of the Costa Line. That's where your sidewalks stop at, at Merrick as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Item number 11 is a resolution confirming the cost of a wheat lean. And those two addresses are 227 Bermuda Street and Church Street, but then parcel number 26060831006001 dot 000. Brett, would you like to?
This is to yours, and we always have to cut, and maintain, but we got to maintain.
Council members, do you have any questions for Brett on confirming that cost? Thank you. Item number 12 is setting a public hearing for August 5, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. declaring certain properties a public nuisance. Brett, do you have any comments?
Two more yards of the honorable maintain, and I'd like to get it to the City Council and get it cut.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments about setting the public hearing for those two addresses? 694 East Road, 1394 South Union Avenue?
No.
All right. So with that, I will go out into the audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening?
I'll just make a quick reference, the item number eight, approving growing Alabama funding agreement. Even though we're getting $150,000 from, you know, the tax credit from Sonoma's, there's still $38,925 that we have to put in there. We don't have any capital outlay for next year, so that would have to come out of reserves.
How much?
$38,925.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any other department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items? Is there anyone?
It wasn't on the agenda, but just a reminder, if y'all are going to add the budget to the setting, if y'all are going to do that, that needs to be done.
We can wait until next week.
Which I don't want you on to.
Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items for this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Dr. Anne Christine. So what are the names of those poll workers that will be working for the election?
Here they are. Would you like to read? Sure. The inspector is Ms. Ann Sullivan. Clerks are Gayle Little, Tamika Shaw, Jessica Moore, Sarah Haywood, Carolyn McCray, Jeff White, and Phillips, Connie Johnston, A.C. Tucker, Elaine Putnam, Claire Fryer, Pat Bolton, Diana Quattore, Anita White, Catherine Farrell, Sam Phillips, Betty Smith, Gaynell Nixon. The absentee boxes will be, the manager is Judy Bloodsworth, with those clerks being Judy Berg, Eleanora Smith Killings, and Martha Falk.
I'm sorry, send in his last three names.
Eleanora Smith Killings, it's hyphenated, and Martha Falk.
Okay, thank you. And what is the cost of the wheat leans for 227 Bermuda Street and Church Street?
It was about $200.
I'm sorry?
$250.
$250 per each?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, that's, so that, actually, the amounts for the wheat leans, 227 was $450, and Church Street is $525.
Well, that's, that's the $200 for the administration fees, too.
So that's the total. So that's, we just, yeah, putting the total up.
So the administration, so it's $250 plus the administration fee to equal those totals?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Are there any comments or questions about any subject in particular this evening? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up and speak?
This is telling on the agenda, he was asking, I'm playing with the unions, and I was a citizen in Ozark approximately 20 years, but I live right outside City Limits.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
I live right outside the City Limits, Ozark. Can you hear me?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. And I shop here every day with my tax money, lifestyle. And when I leave, I make a proposal to the city and the board, each and every member here, to the highway department, to implement something, having the guardrails erected right below the electric transformer that you go up 231, which is going down the hill, and there's a big drop-off, which is approximately 200 feet deep down in that big gully. And if anyone or anybody go off in that gully without someone seeing them, who knows? They could be down there for a long period of time, or they might lose their life. But if we have a guardrail erected going down that way with highway department, maybe it could be prevented. And I want to bring each and every member, aware, I'm pretty sure I don't want to be everybody that seen it and noticed that area, but it's something that's still to be done.
Thank you. Do you mean going north?
Going north, but it's going down the hill. Right up 231, as you pass the transformer.
And let me help him out, so what I'm talking about is, if you leave McDonald's going north, Alabama Tower has a substation right below the Quick Loop, and that's where that gully or ravine starts.
Right there.
If you could get a guardrail.
If we can get something erected, it would, it would, each and every person, Mike, you know, it would be, it would be helpful. We'd never know, we'd never know when something happened.
So, so just because it's on 231, that is a state.
Exactly. That's why I'm making a proposal to the city board and the council, that maybe you all can get with them, or maybe I can.
And just do an inquiry with them.
Yeah, inquire to them and see what they have to say. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Uwe.
Thank you very much.
Ryan, can you do that? Thank you, yes. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am, come up to the mic.
I'd like to send you a question. Excuse me. I live in Candlewick Estates, and we would like to see speed bumps put out there. We have people that come through there speeding like you wouldn't believe, and it's all hours in the day. It's a certain time. And we have handicapped children out there, and we would like to either see speed bumps and patrol more often. It's just really terrible how the speeders come through there. If I had the time.
Candlewick.
Candlewick. Candlewick off of Logan Road.
And Logan, it's like a speed, speedway out there, too.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We can definitely get some patrols. I do know that at least the position right now, you know, is that we cannot put speed bumps anywhere due to the liability whenever we put them in. Anybody can hit them, and then we have to switch the course. So they will not, they will not, now that can be something that can be possibly changed in the future, but we will get with it about that.
But they can't do so.
There are, yes, there are speed bumps in the city.
I'd like to make a comment to something she just said, because I live off Logan Road, and if you're driving a speedway down Logan Road, you can almost guarantee somebody is going to pass you on no passing zone.
Oh, I see.
Yes. And they're, they're flying at high rates of speed, and there's going to be an accident out there one day. Somebody's going to get hit crossing that road, something's going to happen. We need, you know, patrols out there or something, at the very least. If we can't put speed bumps and caution signs saying, hey, look, there's speed bumps, you know, something, then we need more patrols out there, keeping people from speeding through these things and bits like that, because it's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Okay, so, yes, ma'am.
Okay, see, this is just a thank you for the excellent service that our farm and our rescue gives. I know my mom's had a lot of medical issues over the years, and we had another one recently. And it was just awesome to be able to know that I could just pull right into the fire station, and they would be right there at my vehicle. I didn't even have to go in. They recognized something was going on and were able to help. So I just, you know, kudos for the men and women that work on those services. They've done a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come in?
I'm Alice Rice, and while we're talking about roads, let's talk about Will Logan. I don't know when's the last time it was striped, but there are no fog lines. The middle, whatever, the markings in the middle are invisible in weather like this at nighttime. And the approach to it from Andrews Avenue is nothing but ridiculous. When the weather's like this, you cannot see that approach until you're in it. I haven't gotten in it, but I can see people doing that, especially when the weather is like this is, and the visibility is like 10 or 20 percent. So I don't know who is responsible for Will Logan. I don't know if it's the city or the county or who it is, but they're really need to work on that. Because I'm saying, fully 80 percent of that road has no markings. So it's definitely a danger, and people, especially coming around that approach from Andrews Avenue, yeah, people pass there all the time around that curve. It's not good. And Candlewick. There are some people that drive up and down Candlewick that try to do it as loud as they possibly can. They want to see if they can crack my foundation, and they're getting close.
Thank you. Out to that, so whenever they are loud like that, if you do call the non-mercy line, or even if you figure out which vehicles are doing it, you can definitely report that, because there is a noise.
Well, I just have to do it after dark. I don't, you know, I don't know vehicles. I'm, I'm not going to sit out there and try to count these cars that come by. By the time I get out there, they're gone, because they're racing anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Anyway, Will Logan definitely needs some attention from whoever is responsible for it.
Thank you.
And they also need to get rid of the vegetation, because whatever the clearance is supposed to be between the forest and the highway, it's not being met.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else? This is going to be on the.
Brittany.
Brittany, yes. Okay. Hello, my name is Brittany Gallant. You all know me. I just want to take a moment to talk about something that's not always easy to say out loud in rooms like this, but I think it needs to be said, especially considering everything that's been going on these last few months, weeks, years. So I'm going to say it clearly, that I believe transparency is a pipe dream. We all know that on some level. Total transparency just isn't possible in government, not because people are hiding something, but because governing is messy, it's layered, and sometimes sensitive, and that's just the reality of it. But what is possible and required is proactive disclosure. Sharing information with the public before they have to dig for it, before they have to. before they have to dig for it, before they have to file a request, before they just show up here trying to piece together what's going on. I, I, I think we all know that that hasn't always happened here, and the truth is, the relationship between this council and many of the people you represent was deeply fractured in 2023 during the great library debacle. And I'll be honest, some of that fracture came from me. It got ugly, it got heated, it got really intense and personal, and I imagine there are folks up here who still don't trust me, just like there are people, there are people among us, the citizens, who still don't trust you as a governing body. And I get it, but it's been two years, and if we're going to move forward together, we have to stop operating from that place of mutual suspicion. I'm not here to fight anyone, I'm here because I care about what happens next. We, the public, shouldn't have to cry or protest or get loud on, just to find out how our money is being spent, or what's being decided about our city. That information should be offered upfront, because it's ours, it's yours, too. You pay taxes, you live here, and this affects all of us. So as we head toward Election Day, it was just one more council meeting between now and then, I hope every elected official in this room and every challenger hoping to take a seat remembers this, that trust is not rebuilt through silence, it's rebuilt, it's rebuilt through honest, consistent disclosure, especially when it's uncomfortable, especially after all we've been through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallen.
Thank you.
And council members, I will say, just since I have the mic, thank you, Ms. Gallen, for actually creating the Ozark Votes 2025 page, because it is a lot of nonpartisan information being shared on social media, and, and we do appreciate that. You didn't have to, but it just surfaced, and we do appreciate it, or at least I appreciate it.
Ozark Vote.
Ozark Votes 2025. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any other comments or questions on any subject in particular? Yes, ma'am?
Um, to trash along the city, I'm sick and tired of driving down Andrews Avenue and other streets in our city, and there's mattresses all over, I mean, everywhere. These people that own rental property, when their renter skips or leaves or whatever, they just unload that house and put it by the street, and they might do it nice and neat, but then we have our hoarders that go dig into it, dig into it, and make an absolute gigantic mess. What are we going to do about it? We need to clean up our city, that's rule number one, clean up the city, get these lawns mowed, get the trash off the street. I've lived in other cities, I'm formerly military wife, and I've been a lot of places, they don't allow this. You put this junk out on the street, you're going to get a fine. So if you want money, that's a good idea.
So I will say, so, part of what we're doing tonight is that public nuisance, so that's what we're doing, so if someone does, you know, not cut their grass, or, or has a really-
Well, I don't see a lot of streets out here that need cleaning up.
Well, there is a process, so there, and it's not-
I'm sure it is, but it can't take twenty years.
But it, but it, but it does take-
How long does it take? How long does it take?
So once someone reports, that person then has to get a letter, then has to have thirty days to clean it, and then it comes, so it does take a while, so it does take a while.
But it doesn't take ten years, honey, it doesn't even take five years.
But it does take a while, and whenever you're dealing with things like mattresses, and our, our Public Works Department does the absolute most with the resources that they have, so I, I do appreciate you coming up.
We need more resources.
I do, I, I do not disagree, I do not disagree, we don't, we just bought another truck, and then it just broke down, so I, I do not disagree with what you are saying, but I will say that they are doing the best they can with what they have. Now, something that can help, if you do notice an address, we do have a form where you can say this particular address and report that specific address, because unless someone who actually reports the one, they won't necessarily know about it, and they won't get to it faster.
You know, I lived here back in El Paso City, I mean, you know, we lived here before, and we had just bought this house, and it had this carport on it and the thing, and your city guide came by and said, that's got to go. My husband, you tell my husband, he does it right away. Or there's people, oh, well, Hugh's grandfather did, well, Hugh's grandfather did, and it came up after, almost went down.
That I can't, that particular is-
Yeah, I'm just saying, we need to make rules for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Gallen.
But let's clean up the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject
I do want to say one thing, a couple of weeks ago, actually, at our last city council meeting, I mentioned to Officer Niles, and I hadn't seen my neighbor in a couple of weeks, and that he went out and investigated down my neighbor's lane on the floor in her home. They took her to the hospital, and asked him about to the Bayonne Medical Center. She is in a rehab facility right now, recovering from a stroke, so I want to say thank you to our police department and to our EMS for going out and taking care of her. I also want to say thank you to my friends Karen and David for going and mowing her yard, because her grass was probably yay tall, because she had been sick and had not been able to go out and mow her yard, and they came over and they mowed her yard for her. And I do want people to keep in mind that some of our people in our community, our elderly, they may not be able to get out and mow the yard, and they may, may not be able to afford to pay somebody to go out and mow the yard, because she couldn't, she doesn't make enough money. And I found this out through her friends who have come over from Georgia and from Indiana, come down from Indiana to help oversee things while she's in rehab, and she hasn't been able to pay somebody to come over and mow her yard while she's been sick. So these are things that we need to take into consideration when we're complaining about people not mowing their yards, that there might be other alternatives to help those individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, it is a lot to say, if we know our neighbors, we can help our neighbors.
It's a ministry of the community.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular? So with that, I'll go to final comments. Mayor?
I don't have a whole lot, we are continuing to clear on the complex, sports complex, if y'all get a chance to come by there and look, cleared about twenty-four acres out of the seventy-seven, of course, that's still got the big burn off and that kind of thing, but, but don't forget the USA Breakfast, seven o'clock Thursday morning, we've got about three hundred people scheduled, so it'll be a big crowd. The, there is a building on the airport that is a part of the college that they're going to demo, we looked at it, we didn't have any issues with it, it's actually on their property and they're paying for it, we just, I had Brett look at it to make sure of what's some kind of issue, but if you see that coming down in the next little while, that's what that is. You received a letter from Ken Speaks on RMC Island, I sent out to y'all, they are definitely coming and moving forward with purchasing the Bell Building. And then last week, I had six people from Bell and Textron of Texas fly in, and we had a very good meeting about what their future plans are in the building here, so all that's very exciting stuff, so just want to let y'all know that, but that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman and Mayor?
Just want to thank the department head, Chris, working on the budget, keeping his balance, Chris is good at that. And this is early, but Flower Center's putting on another production of, like they did for the two-hundredth anniversary of their county, this is going to be about Eagle Stadium, semi-protein that we had here, the people that brought the town, some stayed here, and business is here for you, it's going to be a good production, they're already working on the preparation, y'all come out and support it, September third.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
First, I want to commend the citizens that came forward this evening with their complaints, and I would like us to take heed to, to all of what they said. To me, it's your needs versus your wants, those are needs that they brought before us this evening, because outside of number one being the safety of our citizens, which some of the comments were about, everything else encompasses providing services that they, we as taxpayers, pay to have those services provided. So with that, I will go to another item that I have, and that is that on the eleventh at six o'clock, at the amphitheater, there will be another forum for candidates leading up to the election. Candidates will have their own table, and you, the citizens are welcome to go to each individual table, the candidates will have their tables listed by name, and you're welcome to go and speak to them, ask them any question you want at the forum at amphitheater six on the eleventh. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman and Mayor?
I just can't get the bell going. Councilman Parol. August twenty-first, Thursday, Carroll High School, they're going to have a community pep rally, a lot of things going on up there at Matthew Stadium, be a lot of fun, and then Carroll's first game is the twenty-second, that Friday night, home opener against Russell County, and we've got all the new facilities there, the press box, the new concession stand, and their new restaurant, it's just going to be so nice up there, so y'all come out and support the Eagles, all of that.
Thank you.
And also, I want to give a, just, I mean, I know, I know Ryan's getting hit tonight with lots of, a lot of words, but those guys, they, they work on weekends, they work every time on Saturdays, you can see them out there, and they're, they're, they are working really hard to, to try to take care of all, all of that, and I just commend you, Ryan, and the, and the department with that, because they, you're, they're giving it your all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harland?
Uh, yes, before, I mean, let's see, all of our Eagles go back to school this week, so you want to watch out for the crosswalks, and if you don't have any children or grandchildren that you're supporting, find, find somebody, find a family that maybe needs some help, and adopt them, be a grandparent to them or a parent to their children if you can, and help them with the needs, the, the rising cost of the cost of putting a child through school these days, even though it is a public school, there's still costs. Also, before we meet again, August the fifteenth is the Wiregrass, I'm sorry, it's not Wiregrass, Magnolia Gardens on East, our summer concert series is winding up that night, a local favorite for on the floor will be performing that night in Magnolia Gardens, from six-thirty until nine-thirty, so everybody's invited to attend, it's free, bring your chairs, bring your blanket, bring your children, it's a nice, family-friendly event. And I just wanted to talk briefly about the speed bumps, because when I was elected last time, my first term, that was one of the things I had, and I asked everybody, all the police officers, you know, just all my colleagues here, and they got the same thing to answer that you got, liability, liability, liability. So I would do some research, because also, before I was elected, I'm not making this a political thing, but they also told me that we couldn't tear down nuisance properties because it was a longer, drawn-out process, but somebody along the way figured it out, because we've been, we're up over eighty properties now. So my commitment to you, I will look, I will do the research and figure it out, how the other cities are doing speed bumps, whether it's just the little rumble strips that remind people to slow down, as opposed to those big old giant speed bumps that you have to hit and then knock the whole bottom end of your car out, I'm thinking more along the lines of those, those little rumble strips that you, like on major highways, that kind of remind you that there's a stoplight coming, maybe some of those might could help, but I promise I will look into that.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Spikes.
Spikes.
No, that's a little too far.
Okay, well, literally, all of you echoed all of my comments, I was like, okay, flowers, start of school, meet greet, everything, so they said everything that I want to say. So with that, I will close this meeting, and we will open the next, yes, ma'am?
Can I give an alibi? I don't come to many city council meetings, sorry I was late, but I wanted to-
So, so if you'll, if you'll come up, I'll, I'll allow you to.
Alibi, that means, I do want to add something to the meeting before it closes, are we about to close?
So we were about to close, but so, are you just making just a general comment about something?
Yeah, something that I want to bring to the city.
Sure, okay, what's your, what's your name, ma'am?
Lacretia Tyson.
Okay.
Hi, y'all. I did run into Mr. Jackson here, and I, you know, I wanted to ask something of the city, if they could help me out with something, which is important to me, I'm a veteran, I served in the Army National Guard for nine years, and I went to a place called the Haley Brain Wellness Center in Jacksonville, Florida, and it's something that helps first responders and veterans with TBI, substance abuse, and PTSD. It's a three-week program, it's a phenomenal program, and they have a representative that can come and speak to the, the city or a group meeting or anything like that, and I want to see if y'all can partner with us, I'm part of Vets for Vets, we got your six, and part of the American Legion, and try to get the first responders, the police, the fire departments, all on board, because I want to be proactive instead of reactive on certain issues, especially dealing with trauma and PTSD and substance abuse for our people who serve.
Okay, so one of the things that we can do is, I can, since the department heads are actually here, I can put you directly in touch with them, because when it comes to their, our employees continuing education and things like that, those department heads are the ones that actually set all of that up, so they can actually look at it, and you can give them more information on it and, and all of that, because specifically detailed, when it, when it comes to something that detailed, city council is not the one who implements it, I'll say, but we can definitely put you in touch with each one of those department heads. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Please don't leave until we can get them from the phone here. A contact number.
Yes, okay, so with that, I will call this meeting to a close, and we will begin the next meeting in three minutes. I call this meeting of the City Council of Ozarks to order, we are beginning this evening with a prayer led by the Councilwoman Parol, and in the absence of Mayor, I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I just don't understand.
All right, please, we just thank you for this lady you made for us, Lord, we just ask you to be with us as we make decisions for the city of Ozark, Lord, we ask that you bless each and every one of our, of our workers, our EMS, our, our police and fire, Lord, keep them safe in all their duties, Lord, just ask you to bless each and every citizen of Ozark as well, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that's held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Councilmembers, what are the wishes of the council?
We approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting these minutes as presented? Do we have any further discussion on accepting these minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to set the agenda as presented, move for some option.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring certain properties a public nuisance. Four thirty Magnolia Street, five sixty-six Newton Avenue, six sixteen Magnolia Street, one ninety-eight Magnolia Street, six fifteen North America Avenue, five forty-five DeFaulter Street, five fifty-one Newton Avenue. I introduce the motion to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on declaring these properties a public nuisance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a resolution appointing the August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five election officials. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution appointing August twenty-six, twenty-five election, election officials and move for its adoption. Would you like me to read the names?
Sure.
They are Inspector Ann Sullivan, Clerk Gail Lipp, Tamika Shaw, Jessica Moore, Sarah Haygood, Carolyn McCray, Jeff White, Anne Phillips, Connie Johnston, A.C. Tucker, Elaine Putnam, Clara Frye, Pat Bolton, Diana Ventori, Anita White, Catherine Farrell, Sam Phillips, Eddie Smith, and Gayne L. Mixes. Attorney Box Manager Judy Blessworth, Clerk Judy Byrd, Ellen Nora Smith-Kinnon, and Monica Ball, and move for its adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is to award the street paving project to Wiregrass Construction and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement of the award. What are the wishes of the council?
Thank you. Madam President, I move that we award the street paving project to Wiregrass Construction Company and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement of such award in the amount of six hundred eighteen thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on awarding this project or the execution of the agreement? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is to approve the growing Alabama funding agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the growing Alabama funding agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement at Alabama Department of Commerce in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars and move for some option.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion of this approval or authorization? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is to approve the mayor to execute an updated use agreement for Eagle Stadium and the batting cages at Eagle Stadium with Ozark City Schools. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the mayor to execute an updated use agreement for batting cages at Eagle Stadium with Ozark City School systems and move for their approval.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this approval? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten is a resolution adopting a transportation plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution adopting a transportation plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six and move for its adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lane. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lane at two twenty-seven Grumina Street in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. And also at Chip Street, parcel number twenty-six, oh six, oh eight, three, one, oh six, oh one, also in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars and move for its adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is setting a public hearing for August fifteenth. Wait.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be, it's Christmas. It's August nineteenth.
Today is the fifth.
Yeah.
So it's August nineteenth. Okay, setting a public hearing for August nineteenth at five P.M. for certain, uh, certain, declaring certain properties a public nuisance. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, move the city public hearing for August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, five P.M. declaring certain properties a public nuisance. Six ninety-four D's Road, thirteen ninety-four South Union Avenue, move for its approval.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting this public hearing? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With no further business, I'll go to the final comments. Councilman and Mayor? Councilman Jackson?
I'd just like to make one observation. For instance, these poll workers, would they be great to just put their names on the website so people know who they are?
Like it has them?
We will have to do that.
Right.
It's gotta be approved first.
Right, yeah, thank you.
So they, so they are.
Right, 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 understood, thank you.
Was that, was that your...
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Earl?
Uh, I'm good.
Councilwoman Harlow?
Um, yes, just real quick, since the budget was shown to us tonight and obviously there was a projected decrease, I got to implore everybody to please shop local, shop the internet, if you can't shop local, and buy gas here. If you are actively buying gas in another city, then you are not helping us pay our rates. That is the only source of income that we have to pay our rates. It is a little higher, but that's how we pay our rates. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll echo everyone, please be safe on the first day of school tomorrow. So if you don't have someone going to school, you will be out on the roads and be aware that there will be lots of people going to school tomorrow. So with that, I would...
Sorry, I meant to... So we've been contemplating a vaping tax. A vaping tax. We've been sent information from Avenue in order to decide one way or the other. Legislation passed an act and we have until October the first in order to incorporate one of two options. Either incorporating our own vaping tax or just allowing the state to distribute the vaping tax based on how they calculate it. So since I've got all y'all in hand, if you would, I'm planning on having a conference with Avenue sometime next week. So if you have any questions that you would like me to ask them before I bring a resolution or an ordinance in place in order to incorporate our own vaping tax, you know, it's very difficult to get any information out of the state as far as what their calculation's gonna be. I think it would be in our best interest to do our own vaping tax. There's a couple of other cities that have actually already incorporated theirs. But like I said, I just wanted y'all's input so that when I do bring it, maybe those questions can be answered also. Sorry.
So that product is not taxed at all?
It is through tobacco tax if they're incorporating it, but most of them are not because there's not a vaping tax on the books.
But they pay the normal sales tax, I guess.
Yes.
When they purchase the product. This would be a little easier.
It'd be just like a tobacco tax.
That's correct. You know, for a while there, our tobacco tax was just dropping like crazy and we couldn't figure out what was going on until somebody said, "Vape it," and that made sense. And so it's been, you know, it's been over a year in the making, working with Joe and trying to figure out a way to incorporate that. And so now that they've passed that legislation, but the legislation only allows that they have to act before October the first, we cannot change it afterwards. And it does not take effect until August the first of two thousand and twenty-six.
What other cities tax on the vaping products?
The only one that I know of that has been submitted so far is Lincoln, Alabama, and they did ten, ten cent milliliter, I think is what they...
Ten, ten meals.
Ten meals, or, you know, whatever the...
That was what you wanted said.
Right.
Something else, Chris, that we probably gonna be to consider in the, in the future for lodging tax is the short tournaments, air BBS. We do have some in Ozark. They are not paying lodging tax.
Yeah. That's a hot topic.
Is that not, is that not a commercial tax? Or is that just, they don't pay any taxes? But I'm, I'm telling you, more and more are gonna come, because we have a more hotel shortage and as we get these tournaments and things in, they're gonna be, need places to stay. And so they're gonna turn to private homes to stay.
Thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I call this meeting to a close.